Love it. Oh, my God, it's awful.
Good afternoon, everyone. I call the meeting of the Governance Committee to order. It is Monday, September 8th at 2:30 PM. Diego, will you please call the roll?
Good afternoon, Clark.
Here.
Pirtle Guinea.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Kriyamalane.
Here. Craig, will you please read the Statement of Conduct?
Welcome to this meeting of the Governance Committee. To testify before this committee in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the committee agenda at www portland.gov/council/agenda/governance-committee or by calling 311. Information on engaging with the committee can be found at the link. Registration for virtual testimony closes one hour prior to the meeting. In-person testifiers must sign up before the agenda item is heard. If public testimony will be taken on an item, individuals may testify for three minutes unless the chair states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when your time is over. The chair preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or committee deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, the committee may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. If you're a lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. Virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig, and thank you, Diego. In today's meeting, the Governance Committee will hear some brief Chair and Vice Chair remarks, hear an update from the Council President on our discussions that we've had around council committee structure, receive a follow-up presentation from the Small Donors Elections to respond to data requests raised at the August 11th meeting, get an update on the Advisory Body's enhancement project, and hear from staff regarding the Council Governance Handbook. So we will now move into Chair announcements. I wanted to focus on the update around having a consultant work with council. So as a reminder, in April of this year, the city was approached by HRNA, a consulting firm, offering to work with the new council in support of improving working relationships and our governance practice. Because council wanted to ensure that there was an opportunity for open competition, a formal RFP, or Request for Proposals, was issued in June. That process has resulted in a single recommended organization to support council with this work. And the approximate cost of working with them is $100,000. Council, at this point, does not have funding identified for this cost, so no contract award is being made at this point. So assuming that in our constrained financial situation, there are no additional funds to be used for this purpose, I'm pausing my efforts and will consider maybe possibly reissuing the RFP at a later date. It is deeply disappointing, this outcome. I appreciate and thank everyone who supported and participated in the process to make this resource possibly available to council. And I do continue to believe that this work is work that we need to do as a council. You know, we will look for other ways to support that happening. And I have learned that when a procurement process is open, there are specific things you can say or not say. So that is all I can say at this point. When it closes, I might be able to speak a bit more about that. And I know that there are, I have some colleagues that would like to share a bit. Vice Chair Ryan will go next in giving remarks. But Vice Chair Ryan, before that, are you okay with, because this is a committee, we can be a little informal, with Counselor Clark jumping in and sharing some thoughts? Okay, great.
Do you want me to go first?
If you're replying to what she just said.
Sure. Thank you, Chairwoman Kriyamalane. I'm not sure how deeply you want to go into this. I just want to say that I'm really disappointed that we don't have something lined up already. I think, you know, when I was running for office, so many people asked me, "How are 12 people going to do this?" Repeatedly, and I said, "Well, we'll probably come up with a process for identifying our shared goals. We'll probably come up with a process for identifying our shared agendas so that we can, you know, move forward together. And then if that doesn't work, we're going to have to get some kind of, what I called it, marriage counseling," which is just being a little cheeky, "but some kind of help." And I feel like we really need that to help us move together, to pull together, to hopefully all move in the same direction to the extent that we can, but at least improve those relationships. So I'm disappointed that we don't have something right now. And I think the public is waiting for us to demonstrate that cohesion and that ability to move forward on behalf of the entire city. I think they're watching us, and I think it's incumbent on us to restore the public's faith in this new form of government, that this is going to work, we can make this work. So I know you said we don't have the resource. I'm certainly willing to take money out of my council budget to try to help pay for some sort of assistance like this. But I just wanted to say that, that I'm sorry that we're not moving forward. Anyway, thank you for hearing me out. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Counselor Clark. I echo everything you shared and agree with you and appreciate your perspective on this and how you continue to bring us back as a council to the importance of making sure that we are having the discussions needed to figure out where things align, how to move forward together. And with that, I will now hand things over for the Vice Chair remarks to Vice Chair Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to acknowledge that I also appreciate everything you just said. And I hope that we'll have further discussion on the logistics of this. So did you say that we're still, it's still pending? It's still open? It's not, it closed?
It's not closed yet. And so we can't specifically say, we can't say specifics about the different consultants that are or aren't still in the running.
And when you were, so, anyway, you responded that your office would pitch in. I think it would be helpful as we get closer to this on, that will obviously be shared with all 12 offices when we make that decision. Okay, all right. So I didn't know you were going to say that, but I really appreciate it, Counselor Clark. I really value the partnership that we have, and I really like that you opened up the beginning of the meeting for this dialogue, to bring a little bit of what we're talking about before we, when we prepare for meetings to the dais. My thoughts over the last few weeks have been focused on committee structure, which should come as no surprise to anyone watching. Council has given so much thought to this question. What is the appropriate time we should spend in council meetings? And what value do committees provide for us as we conduct our legislative responsibilities? I know we have committee meeting updates on the agenda up next, so I will tee up some of my thoughts for that with my candid comments at the beginning of the meeting. Since council started the discussion about council policy committees, I have become more certain about the importance that our elected body spends the time necessary to get clarity on shared priorities. This work can only be done if we have time on the calendar, which is possible if we suspend committees. I don't see how we move forward unless we are working from the same sheet of music. My understanding is that the contract to have a consultant come on site to do this work with the council is on a reset. We just heard about that. And may not occur, which makes my proposal for the strategic goal setting even more necessary. My proposal that I will bring forth at the next committee meeting, if I have enough sponsors, where we will talk about committee structure, is to suspend committee meetings until we do have a strategic priority setting as a full council. Once we have shared priorities, it will inform our decision-making about the number and subjects of council committees. My proposed language before all the preambles gets down to this. Whereas role clarity between council, mayor, and the city administrator is necessary to be efficient with our resources, and whereas Portland continues to experience complex challenges, and all city leaders need to be focused on delivering complex solutions for Portlanders. And so now, therefore, be it resolved that the committee, council committees, including their duties, scopes, subject matter, membership, and leadership, shall be suspended until January 7th, 2026, under the specific provision that before that date, the full council approves a guiding body of collective city council priorities, key strategies to achieve priority outcomes, and measurable targets to track and achieve those priorities. Our city needs leadership, focus, and equal participation throughout the process from the full city council, the city administrator's office, and the mayor's office. This process will be managed by Council Operations on or before the 7th of January, 2026. And so I'm hoping that that's the conversation that we can also have next week and that this will be active as one of the proposals that we're looking at. I really just think it's the best way for our city to move forward during a challenging time of change. And those are my internal comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ryan. Diego, will you please read the first item?
Item 1, Council President's Update on Committee Structure Discussions.
Thank you. So folks that have been following Governance know that we had a couple sessions in August to talk about the cadence of our full council meetings and committee structure. I'd like to thank Council President for having, setting up those conversations. Also want to shout out your Chief of Saff, Natalie Sepp, who really hustled to get those scheduled to make sure that we could have those conversations. And thought that it would be good for us to have some time here in the Governance Committee to just hear a bit of a summary of how those went, where things are going. So we have an opportunity to hear from Council President with just a bit of an update on those discussions around the council's committee structure. And then we can open it up for a brief discussion with committee members.
Thank you, Chair Kriyamalane. So as the Chair mentioned, we had a number of conversations in early August about the future of our committee work on council. And it was very clear in those conversations to me that a lot of our colleagues felt like what we're doing now isn't working. What was not as clear is whether there was consensus on what we should be doing instead. And there were a number of proposals brought forward. There was a lot of discussion about whether some of the internal work, the governance and finance work, should be done in committees or by the body as a whole. There was a lot of conversation about how we group different policy areas together. And I think part of what I heard, very frankly, is similar to what I heard in January from our colleagues, which is that everybody wants there to be fewer committees, but nobody wants to give up the work that they think needs to be done in its own space. And now, because differently from in January, we have folks who are guiding conversations as committee chairs and are in the middle of the agendas that they put forward for the year. There's a little bit of hesitancy of shifting that work. So I heard a number of our colleagues say, "Yes, we want to make a change." I heard a number of our colleagues say, "No, this isn't the right time for a change." And I also heard, as Counselor Ryan, you spoke to today, a few people say, "Why do we have committees at all?" And I think that the reality is, while we have a council with a lot of shared goals and a lot of shared ideas of where we need to head for our city, we don't yet have a lot of shared agendas on how to get there. And in order to create committees that align with an agenda, there would be a lot of work that needs to happen that I'm not sure we can get consensus on, at least in the short term. So we will continue the conversation around committees, but I wanted to air here today that we may not land on a change. We may still. I think there's more conversation to be had. But in the way that moving to weekly committee meetings felt after the initial conversation, like it was likely a given, we just had details to work out, I don't think in our committee discussion we're in that same place where there's a given outcome. I think there are still a lot of possibilities on the table. I do want to note that that doesn't mean that these committees are set in stone forever. Our code allows, as Council President, for me to bring forward a proposal for committee leadership at any point. And in doing so, I could consider bringing forward changes in the future. Our code allows for any counselor to bring forward a proposal on committee structure, as Counselor Dunby did at any point. And at the beginning of the new year, when we restart our work to some extent, we have council leadership elections again. We reconsider how we do our work. There will also be, I think, a natural pause where this conversation will come back up. The next few council meetings, just given other things that are coming and on those agendas, won't be the right time to take this up because I do think that this is something where we need to make sure that we have space on the agenda to really consider whether we want to move forward with a change or not. So I'm not planning on bringing this back to our next two council meetings. But toward the end of the month or in early October, I'll make sure that it does get back on the council agenda so that we can continue that conversation that we started and decide, again, I think that there's three paths at this point. Do we stay where we are for now, knowing that this will, if it doesn't come back up naturally between now and the beginning of the new year, we'll have a natural point for it to come back up? Do we move in the direction that Counselor Ryan has proposed and take a break from committees? I think we need to have a conversation about how that fits in with the direction that the voters gave us in approving the new charter. But I think there are conversations to be had still there. Or do we move forward with a new committee structure? And while I do think that we heard from a majority of council that they want to see changes, I don't know that we heard from a majority of council coming together around what those changes should be. So is there the ability to come together around a single proposal for a change or not?
Thank you for that summary and for sharing what folks can expect for when this will be taken up again. Vice Chair Ryan?
Yeah. Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you, Council President. I just want to say for the record, I'm not a supporter of no committees. I've just said that a temporary suspension, suspension, it's different. So we can get focused on priorities for the reality what our city is facing. And then from there, I trust we can have committees that are relevant and have impact after that level setting action that I think leadership should be going through right at this moment. An action from the committees that is currently in motion could be moved into the full council. So there's no reason for the suspension of action. That's not what I'm saying at all. What I don't like currently is that we're adding more meetings. We've added council meetings now every week, and then we're going to keep it as so, as it is, status quo. And that jeopardizes what I think was the main reason why a lot of people voted yes on charter reform, which is to see their representatives out in the district more often. So there's only so many hours in a day, and we're jeopardizing our in-service work out in the communities where we should be listening to actually be relevant to the crises that are currently taking place on our streets.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just really briefly, I appreciate your thinking. I think I largely agree with you. And I was the person who was hoping to suspend everything for a while. And I wanted to say to Counselor Ryan that, you know, we have the holidays coming up as well. And we're only looking at maybe one committee meeting, my committee meeting, in one meeting in November and one meeting in December. So there's not a lot of meetings coming up. We have a lot of work to do. We are pre-programmed. We have some pretty important issues, particularly after the November, I mean, the September special session results or non results. So I'm just wondering if you would entertain, I mean, I'm happy to air your proposal. I'm not sure I support it. I'm willing to have a dialogue about it, but I'm wondering if we could have a parallel process so that we don't have to give up the pre-programmed. I mean, we're pretty programmed in TNI. We have a huge subject area and really important issues coming up. So I don't want to give that up. But I'm just wondering if, is there a way to do a parallel process to carve out time to do what you want to do, given that we're really not going to have that many committee meetings later in the fall, going into the winter? Just food for thought.
Okay.
But I appreciate your thinking.
Of course, if that was a question. And I think those could also be, if it's pre-programmed, those could also be put into the larger council with your leadership in the council meeting. Just if you would consider that thought.
Go ahead, Counselor Pirtle Guinea.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to mention that Counselor Ryan, I very much agree with you that part of this reform was to ensure we have time in district. And I share your concern about the amount of time that we are under the current schedule, needing to be scheduled at the dais. I think Counselor Clark raised the point that her committee won't be meeting at every available time slot over the coming months. And if we do move forward without a change to committees, but with the added council meetings, first of all, I am optimistic that the change to the number of council meetings won't expand our council time at the dais significantly. I think it may a little bit. But I hope what it does is allows us to stick to our timelines a little better, be more strategic about when things come to the calendar because we have more options, and end our meetings in a more timely manner so that we have that time on Wednesday afternoons rather than running very, very late to get other work done. And so that we're not as reliant, though I think there will be some months when we are, but so we're not as reliant on those Thursday times for council meetings. I also, if we move forward with the current schedule, will be asking other chairs, like Counselor Clark has offered that she will be, to make sure that they are intentional about when they schedule committee meetings and that we don't meet unless we have important work to tackle. I think for some committees, there's a lot of work coming up. And for other committees, there are some pre-planned slower periods of time. But I do want to make sure that in my role as Council President, I'm doing everything I can to give us the time and space to be working with constituents, both in district and also working on constituent concerns, some of which happens in district and some of which happens with our partners in the administration trying to problem solve. I think those are both really important things that we do.
Putting myself in the queue here. I appreciate how Council President clearly kind of explained a few buckets or paths forward, the keeping things how they are and knowing that at the end of this calendar year, there will be a natural time for us to reevaluate committees. Two, taking a break from committees, as Counselor Ryan has talked about, finding a time to reset, find some direction as a full council. And then, three, being open to redoing, resetting the committees as we see them are, as they are. I wonder if three can almost be broken into three and four, where there's a full redo, reset, and also keeping committees mostly how they are, but figuring out if there are some tweaks, some small things that can be changed. I mentioned this in our full council discussions about this. We'll see how this plays out. But now that we are meeting, we're about to start meeting weekly in council meetings, but twice a month in committee meetings, I'm wondering if there's going to be a bottleneck, if it will be hard to get things through committees because that cadence is a little bit off. We'll see how that works out. And some of my same concerns remain with just having eight committees, a lot of dais time, where we're not in district as much as we'd like, a challenge for us to really fully track all of the committees as counselors and for the public, and also the workload that it puts on staff. And I believe I'm in a similar place to Counselor Clark, where I'm open to what you're proposing, Vice Chair Ryan. And a piece that makes me interested in it is that it does seem to almost combine with this conversation around working with a consultant or just having these conversations about where are we going as a full council and what are our shared priorities and goals? So, you know, that's going to catch my attention a little bit. Appreciate this conversation, and it's, we'll continue it. All right. Seeing no hands. Diego, can you please read the next item?
Item 2, Small Donor Elections Follow-Up.
All right. Thank you so much to the team from the Small Donors Elections Program and the Portland Elections Commission for coming back to us here at Governance to follow up on questions that were raised by counselors during our August 11th meeting. Ordinance 2025-310 was sent to full council by this committee at the last meeting and will be heard at an upcoming full council meeting. Really, really appreciate the work being done. And thank you so much for being responsive to these data requests. And now I am happy to turn it over to Susan, Danita, and Anai? Anai? Can you tell me how to say your name properly? Sorry.
No worries, it's Anai.
Anai. Welcome.
Great, thank you. I'm Susan Mate, Director of Small Donor Elections. Here with me are Danita Harris and Anai Segovia Rodriguez, who's Vice Chair of the Portland Elections Commission. Thank you so much for being so engaged with the Portland Elections Commission report and the Small Donor Elections program. We are here to provide the data you asked for at the August 11th Governance Committee meeting. We've broken it down into four parts, which you can see on the screen. One is about the auditor's match cap. Another is about the council certification threshold of 250 Portland donors. Another is about tiers for council campaigns. And finally, about whether the Portland Elections Commission discussed Commission discussed banning third-party fundraising. Next slide. So let's jump right in. When we were discussing the auditors, the recommendation from the Portland Elections Commission to reduce the auditor's match cap from 100,000 to 50,000, that was to bring it more into alignment with the other program match caps. So this slide shows recent mayor's races that had both a primary and a general and what they cost as compared to the match cap for the program, which is that orange line on the slide. And then the other chart on it shows council races that went all the way from primary to general, what they cost are the blue bars, and then the tier one, two, and three match caps are the orange lines there. And what you can see is that the match cap is generally speaking lower than the cost of winning each of those seats. On the next slide, it shows the auditor's match cap compared to the two.
I'm sorry, could you go back to that, just a point of clarification?
Sure.
Since my name was on there. I didn't go through the general. It was just a primary in 2022.
You have the August general election, special election.
2022 is, you're in the wrong year, sorry. So you're using my name, and it says 2022, and I only had a primary. I won in the primary.
Oh, yes, okay.
So I just had to do a fact check.
Okay, sounds like the label was wrong, but I think the information in it is accurate. Okay, thank you. So unlike the council and mayor's races where the match cap is lower than the cost to win, in the auditor's race, there have only been two competitive races, even if we actually had to look at city and county auditor's races to find two competitive auditor's races in the last 20 years. And for their race, the match cap is significantly higher than the cost of what it costs to win their election. And so to bring it into alignment, the Portland Elections Commission asked to lower it from 100,000 to 50,000. Do you want to ask questions at the end of the presentation, or do you want to ask at the end of each subject? This is the end of the auditor's subject.
Are we on number two now? Question two.
What was the header for this one?
This was about the auditor's match cap. The next one is about the council threshold for certification of 250.
How about if counselors put their hands in the queue, then I'll know that they have a question for that specific graph? And then we can also have some time at the end?
Okay.
Do you have a preference?
Oh, I have no preference.
I think keep going then.
Okay. All right. So the next question was about whether the council certification threshold at 250 Portland donors was optimal. And the data that was asked for was how many Portland donors did each candidate have, you know? And so this is a chart that shows the number of unique Portland donors each candidate had, and the other piece of information on it is the number of number-one rankings each candidate received in the election. And that is the data that the Portland Elections Commission most focused on when asking, as they do after every election, whether all of the numbers in the program design continue to be up to date and aligned with how elections really work. And what you see is, well, I'll also say the orange dots are candidates who won, and then the purple lines show tiers one, two, and three thresholds. And what you can see here is, well, one first thing is that you can notice that a lot of the dots are right around the 250 and 750 line. Anyone who started to get within shooting distance of 250, you know, either pretty much made it the distance, and the same thing with 750. So no one's really hovering around 600. If they got to 600, they tried for 750. But the main thing that the Portland Elections Commission, you know, saw this time and also the last two election cycles is that there is no clean line you can draw across this where everyone above that made a really respectable showing in the election results, and everyone below that did not, right? If there were such a place, that would be a wonderful spot to put a certification threshold. But the truth is that there are people who are significantly below the tier, the certification threshold of 250 that made a fairly respectable showing, and there are even candidates in, who made it to 750 donors who received significantly fewer votes, sometimes less than 1% of votes. So there's no spot you can draw a line where you aren't either including people who received very few votes or excluding people who received a very respectable number of votes. Ultimately, the Portland Elections Commission decided not to recommend changing the 250 threshold now because 2024 was such a unique election cycle with almost all open seats, a huge number of candidates. It was very overwhelming and fatiguing to donors, and it created a very unusual fundraising climate. So they decided they wanted to see the data from the 2026 election, which, fingers crossed, will be a more typical election cycle. And based on that, revisit this question, is 250 the right threshold for certification for council candidates?
Can Vice Chair Ryan ask a question before you head to the next slide?
Thank you. That makes sense that they'd want more data. In your conversation, what I haven't heard yet, which is, I think, really important, is that there was no primary in 2024, but there was in 2020 and in '22 in the matching gift program. So I still think it's too low, 250, for what doesn't have a primary, so it's just one vote, right, in the general? So what was that conversation like when you distinguished between the previous elections, which had a primary, where, that's why I brought it up, is a fact check, because in 2020, those, that data with my name with different numbers would have been more relevant to where, what you were talking about, because there was a primary, and then you had the general, which you raised money again for that. So why is it that we aren't just, what was the conversation like when they brought up the fact that there was no primary in 2024?
Are you talking about when it came to the auditor's cap? Are you talking about the 250 certification?
Talking about the 250, but I'm talking about the fact, Susan, that I haven't yet heard from you that what was unique about 2024 also is that there was no primary.
Yes.
And so because there was no primary, I remember when I signed up, I was surprised that the ceiling wasn't raised, because the ceiling in 2020 and 2022 was 250. Not ceiling, sorry, the floor, the floor. And, but there was a primary, and then there was another one for the general.
Yeah. So after the 2022 elections, the Portland voters approved the charter amendments that changed how elections work, including eliminating the primary.
Right.
And also taking council races from citywide to, based on four districts.
Yes.
And so there was some conversation about whether or not to decrease the 250 now that each counselor is focusing on only one quarter of the electorate. And ultimately, they decided they wanted to see the data from 2020 before deciding, sorry, 2024 before deciding. But because the auditor's race, which can be a little bit of a sleepy race, two candidates in 2022 had raised 250 contributions, they felt even for a council candidate who is running in a quarter of the city, 250 should still be realistic for them. And so the main discussion was, should we lower that threshold? The other discussion was, should we require people to collect their 250 contributions inside of their district, which they decided, no for now, and then revisit after 2024? And then they decided again in 2024, they don't want to limit those donors to being inside of the district. So that was the main conversation around revisiting the 250 threshold before the 2024 election cycle to accommodate the changes in the election cycle. With the idea, with the primary, primary be gone, there was some hope among, I think, the public that this might shorten the election cycle so that when you want to throw your hat in the ring for council, maybe you didn't have to throw your hat in the ring until the summer before the election, or just the spring before the election, whereas in prior years, because there was a May primary, people were throwing their hat in the ring more like the fall before. 2024 was such an unusual cycle and so crowded that people were really throwing their hat in the ring the summer before, which was even earlier than people were doing in the prior two election cycles for council races. And so they wanted to see again, and once we get to 2026 and 2028, when does the election for council start in earnest in that election cycle? And that would help also inform, you know, if that's when that, if people start running in earnest in March of the election year, that would also inform how many donors it would make sense to get contributions from in order to hit a threshold. So they're still waiting for a more normal election cycles data on that.
Thank you. So the summary is, no, we didn't have that conversation about raising the floor. In fact, it sounds like you had a conversation about lowering it perhaps? So I guess that's maybe why I get to mention, give you some thoughts from the dais, which are different than anything maybe you heard in your committee. I'm surprised that there wasn't a conversation about increasing the floor to maybe 350 or 500, since there is only one election. And right now, there's a lot of taxpayer money going out to many, many, many candidates. And again, everyone agrees with your assessment that it was a special election, and we need more data, but I am surprised that there wasn't a conversation about actually increasing the floor as opposed to decreasing it.
Yeah, there was in 2024, discussion of increasing it, but not, not prior to 2024.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I didn't hear that part. I heard the other, thanks.
So the next question we are here to answer, uh-oh, we have a, oh, sorry, it looks like we have an old, we have an old draft of the PowerPoint that went on, went to share. So I'm going to hand my computer over.
Is it possible for Counselor Clark to ask a question while that's being pulled up?
Yes.
Just a quick question on the chart of the certification threshold. The orange number represented the, what percent, that's the, what's the orange number again?
Orange meant that candidate won.
Okay. And that was the, there, the amount of the percentage of the votes that they received or?
Percentage of number-one rankings.
Number-one rankings, okay, thanks.
I have, I think, two more questions to look over, and we are at time, but we can go over a little bit.
Okay. Let's, I just need a little pause while, actually, I'll just let you take the computer. There's a chart on the next slide I wanted to share. Actually, you know what? I'm going to skip while Danita gets the chart up to the last chart, which, with the last page, which doesn't have a chart on it. One of the questions was, did the Portland Elections Commission consider banning third-party fund, paid third-party fundraising? And they actually discussed this over multiple meetings and unanimously decided not to recommend, recommend such a ban for several reasons. One was a concern that the ban would not be effective. Third-party fundraisers could easily change the terms of their contracts to function more like temp agencies, where they're handing their staff over to campaigns to hire directly, to technically work for the campaigns, not for the third party, but structurally, nothing else would change. Another concern was that a ban creates enforcement difficulties for the city. It's hard for the city to know which exact services each vendor provided for a campaign, and whether each contribution a campaign submits is matchable was collected by the campaign or by a third-party, a paid third-party fundraiser. The other concern was that the ban is not supported by the primary program principles, which is to give the public confidence that their government is working in everyone's best interest, not just in the interest of large campaign contributors, that canvassers collecting $500 to $350 contributions door-to-door doesn't undermine that public trust that their government is working for all Portlanders. The final concern was that the ban could undercut program effectiveness. The Program Elections Commission typically recommends restrictions apply to all candidates, whether or not they opt into the program or not, and that any, that restrictions inside the program that don't exist outside of the program could decrease program participation and therefore effectiveness. A ban on paid third-party fundraising for all candidates would likely not survive constitutional scrutiny, and it's unclear whether a similar ban for, only for participating candidates would survive constitutional scrutiny. Do you have any questions on that before I go to the third subject of the chart?
Vice Chair Ryan?
Thanks. So this is on third-party fundraising.
Okay.
Yeah. So I appreciate that your staff came back with an update, but I'm not sure that it captured my questions and concerns appropriately from last meeting. I remain concerned that there is an industry for paid lobbyists to go door-to-door, paid solicitors to go door-to-door to fundraise for candidates, but they're not that transparent about the exact beneficiaries, beneficiaries of their efforts. When you pay a canvasser, they work for the candidate. When volunteers canvass for, canvass for a candidate, it's clear to the voters who they're opening their door to. It's been confusing who you're opening your door to for these individuals who are not clearly paid canvassers for a candidate or a volunteer for the candidate but for a third party. Let me give you an example. So a person representing a climate organization who solicits donations for a cause, as well as, at the end, they say for the candidates they prefer. So these are public funds that, that are going for candidates, not causes, but the pitch at the door is about causes. And so that's when I heard these stories when I was campaigning, that's what people were confused about, is they were listening to a cause, and they thought, maybe is this greenpeace at my door? Who's at my door? And then eventually towards the end, it'd be like, well, these are the candidates that would benefit from this donation. And so to me, that seems really messy, Susan. And was that, I assume that you had some longer conversations maybe about this exact scenario?
There were conversations about the concept that an organization that believes in a particular, has a particular value and goal, for example, Clean Air, that, you know, when, that they've raised money for candidates who support Clean Air. And there was not concern on the counts, on the commission, that there's something problematic for democracy about people collectively coming together about a thing that they matter, that they care about, and trying to help candidates who support that same thing raise money. Whether or not they're, the, the issue of whether or not the person who's donating understands who they're donating to was investigated by the program, and the outcome of that investigation was shared with the Portland Elections Commission, which is that a reporter had called through a number of someone's donors, and a lot of them said they don't remember donating to that candidate. And then when I sent each of those donors a copy of the form with, that goes with that donation, with their own handwriting, writing in the candidate's name, and asked them, you know, is this your handwriting? And it does say that, which candidate they're donating to and their own handwriting, or in some cases, they wrote a check out specifically to that, you know, campaign friends of whoever, you know? Then they were, they all said, yes, that is, that is my handwriting, and okay, I do remember that now, you know? So ultimately, the program found that the donors were writing the candidates' names down that they were donating to. So they did understand who they were donating to at the moment that they made the contribution. It's just, it sounds like later, they, they had some fuzziness? And that's a thing that happens every single year in the program. We, we always do spot checking of about 10% of contributions to make sure that they were real contributions. And we always get these sort of like false alarms where someone says, I never made that contribution, and then we have to start breaking it down. Okay, it says you made it by this credit card on this date, another person at your address made a similar contribution, and then they'll say, oh, that's right, we went to that event, and this person asked us, and we both gave, now I remember it, you know? So it just sort of is a thing that the program deals with all the time, is people later kind of being fuzzy about which contributions they made. But we did definitely make sure that the contributions that came in through Portland Clean Air Fund, that the people who made those contributions really did make those contributions and made it specifically to that candidate and knew it at least at the time that they made them.
Okay. Let me, well, first of all, the example that you used is interesting. I didn't know that was the name of the group, but that was a pretty smart name, since I don't know anyone that would be against Clean Air. But what I think that people are scratching their head over is that these fundraising organizations are getting paid considerably more per donation than the donations are actually even worth. And so we're using public money in a way that I don't think was in the spirit of the law, in my opinion. And so I do think that this issue won't go away until we get better. And so I do think that this issue won't go away until we get better focus on. When you talk about as a volunteer, it's one thing, but when you hear that they're paid canvassers, and the money that they're getting paid comes from the taxpayers in Portland for the small donor campaign, I think we're starting to get outside of the scope of what people said they were voting for, in terms of donations for candidates.
Can I ask a clarifying? Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So is your concern that the nonprofit sort of profited from the fundraising contracts? Or is your concern that the canvassers pay? If we had all of the canvassers and what they were paid, and then we compared what they raised in private contributions, that the total amount raised in private contributions was less than the total amount that they were paid as canvassers?
I didn't totally track all that. But I will say this, I think people are concerned that the money was being used outside of the scope of just an exact campaign for a candidate. But instead, it was for a canvassing lobby, and they would get paid money from those candidates. And then those candidates chose to spend their campaign money, which is matched by the city, on this mechanism, which is a pretty low rate of return. But I think for them, getting to the thresholds of 250, 500, was more important than anything else. And they knew, once they hit that, then they would benefit from spending their money in this manner.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's clear as mud, and that's probably why people have been asking questions about it.
So the remedy you'd like to see is, what's the outcome you'd like to see?
I, I think there needs to be more clarity that when someone goes door-to-door, and they're a paid solicitor, like when my, when a campaign manager, like my campaign manager's at the door, it's really clear the campaign's paying for that person to be at the door, asking for that money. When you're a paid solicitor from a nonprofit organization for a specific lobby, I hope that's really, that, I think, is where the transparency gets fuzzy.
So you'd like to see disclosure, that I'm a paid canvasser for?
For this cause. And we're supporting this candidate today, like, say that. Instead of, I think people get exhausted, like we are right now in this conversation. By the time that they get into that dialogue at their door, they probably are like, okay, great, and it's over with, and they gave them $5. But the fact that the city's providing a payment for that organization to do that, that seems to go beyond the scope of just one candidate, I think is where it gets murky. If a campaign comes to my door, I know who they are.
Yeah. I will say that the Portland Elections Commission did discuss that exact issue of, like, can we, or should the city require third-party fundraisers to follow a script that includes certain information, et cetera? Ultimately, they decided not to go there, mainly because, by and large, even when a campaign directly hires someone to do door-to-door canvassing, it's really hard to ensure that they actually stick to the script that they're given. And it also is really hard for the city to know whether or not people are going off of script. So they did grapple with that question, but I'm happy to bring that back to them, to grapple with some more, if you'd like me to.
I think it's necessary based on this conversation.
Sure.
Yeah.
Councilor Clark.
Just really quickly, you know, we're over time. Susan, on the chart on six, can you just give a quick answer as to what the thinking was behind not going to the 500, having a?
Okay. Oh, is the, this, is it the other chart?
Chart, it's on page six.
Okay. You go forward. Okay, yes.
There you go.
So, just very quickly. The chart in orange shows campaign, in 2024, what the payments were to a particular candidate, right? So basically, once they hit 250 Portland donors, they immediately got almost $40,000. They got some payments in order to get them to the $40,000, and that's when they hit that match cap that was lowered from $100,000 due to underfunding. And then they had to go all the way to 750 donors before they got that next $40,000, right shortly before the election, right? Green shows, well, hey, if we actually made the match cap, the next, a tier between one and two at 500, green shows that they would get that second bunch of money significantly sooner, but they'd ultimately get less money. Because if you brought that threshold down to 200, then we did the math, and about 12-ish additional candidates would have hit that 500 threshold, then hit the 750 threshold. So that would cost the program more money. With a finite amount of money, the program would have had to lower those match caps, not down to 40%, but down to 35%. So ultimately, while that campaign would have gotten money sooner, they would have ultimately had less money total, right? And the blue line shows that had the program been fully funded in 2024, as soon as they hit that 250 threshold, they would just continuously get matching payments until, throughout the election cycle. Now, if, this was a campaign that raised a lot of fives and tens and fifteens. If a campaign mostly raises $20 or more, you would actually see, once they hit $100,000, they would have, like, had a short pause once they hit that cap before they got this next threshold. But it would be a very short pause, as opposed to these long gaps when the match caps were down to $40,000. And so, basically, it's meant to show that we could add this threshold, this, this tier between one and two at 500. It would ultimately mean campaigns get less money if the program's underfunded. But, you know, the best way to, like, eliminate this big gap problem is actually to provide the program with adequate funding, and then the problem just disappears.
Thank you so much for all of these great points and questions. Vice Chair Ryan has one more quick comment, and then hopefully, any of us can follow up with you about further questions.
I realize we got into a lot of details, and I think what I'm trying to really get you to understand, I realize I don't represent your average person on your commission, it sounds like, but it is something I hear often from people. There was a lack of transparency in the second-party fundraising, period. And if we don't have a better declaration of transparency going into the next one, I worry about the consequences the city will face. So I hope you take that seriously.
Yeah. What types of, I mean, other than this, what script they follow, would you like to see transparency in, like, the financials related to the third-party fundraising?
I think your training needs to include very clear guidelines on if you choose to decide to spend taxpayers' money on a lobby group to help you get your threshold, then be really clear about that.
Okay. Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Got it? Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Clark, did you still? I'm really glad Vice Chair Ryan brought up training, because I just did a training with you all, and was also thinking that that is a great place to bring up things, even if there is an official ban, talk about some of these squishy areas. Thank you so much for being with us today.
Thank you.
Diego, can you please read the next item?
Item three, Advisory Bodies Enhancement Project Briefing.
All right, colleagues, so we have a briefing on the Advisory Bodies Enhancement Project. This project will ensure that the city's advisory bodies will align with our new form of government, and that we have standard citywide practices. So as a reminder, this spring, we heard a preview of the project. Since then, the project has progressed, publishing its most recent status update in late August. Today, we'll hear a brief overview of the project to reorient folks to the project's spoke, scope, and approach. And we'll also have some time for questions and discussion. So this item doesn't require any action from us now. Vice Chair Ryan and I would like to schedule a longer discussion next month at Governance, where we can dig in into the proposed citywide policies, practices that will maybe come out of this. We anticipate project implementation to include both some code adopted by the full council, and many practices put into administrative rules. So now I'm happy to hand it over to our presenters, Amanda Garcia-Snell, the city's engagement officer, and Julia Meyer, who is managing the project. Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilors. And as Vice President Koi Amalene mentioned, I'm Amanda Garcia-Snell, for the record. I wanted to just start by thanking you for allowing us this time on your agenda. We know you're busy, and we appreciate the opportunity to share with you the status of the Advisory Bodies Enhancement Project. I also want to extend my gratitude to all of you and to your fellow councilors, as well as community members and staff, who, like us, have a genuine interest in seeing alignment and improvements related to this effort. As mentioned, we, I was here in the spring to, to share with you a proposal, which this committee approved, and that launched the project. Without jinxing it, I am happy to say that we're on track to complete the project by the end of the calendar year, which we are very excited about. The Advisory Bodies Enhancement Project is a much-needed opportunity to be thoughtful and intentional about all aspects of advisory bodies. And with that, I will turn it over to my colleague Julia Meyer, who will share more details about this work.
Thank you, Amanda. Chair Koi Amalene, Vice Chair Ryan, councilors. For the record, my name is Julia Meyer, I use she/her pronouns, and I am thrilled to be the project manager for the Advisory Bodies Enhancement Project. The last time I was at Governance was for the final report of the Government Transition Advisory Committee, I believe. So it's nice to be back with you. I have a short, probably a little bit less than 10-minute presentation, and as the chair mentioned, we then have a little bit of time for questions and discussion. I want to do a note on vocabulary before I get into it. This project sometimes uses the term ABCs, which is really meant to be all city-appointed boards, committees, work groups, whatever they're called, commissions, et cetera. It's a term often used by other jurisdictions to be broader than the term advisory bodies, because not all quote-unquote advisory bodies are advisory in nature. So I use them interchangeably. I don't love using acronyms in a public meeting, so I may use the term advisory bodies or ABCs, just for clarification. So as background, you know, charter reform raised questions about what a new form of government meant for advisory bodies. How are we going to think about the roles and responsibilities of bodies with two separate branches of government? And what kind of processes do we need to update now that we have charter reform? And I think that was really what led to this project. We tried to do some work before Amanda got here, and I think ultimately, it was decided, you know, let's wait until the city brings on its first engagement officer to really get this work up and running. Next slide, please. So as Amanda mentioned, she was last here in late spring to talk about this project in particular, went through kind of what the primary objectives were, and got this committee's go-ahead to start the project. The project goals are on this slide. They are to align the ABC program with Portland's new form of government, create a shared understanding of the goal and intent of advisory bodies, standardized equity-centered practices for appointments, operations, and volunteer and staff experience, promote better-resourced and more empowered, meaningful, and integrated advisory bodies, ensure our existing bodies continue to address an identified need or goal of the city, and ensure meaningful participation by those serving, and expand the availability of information about ABCs so Portlanders know how to find and engage with their work. Next slide, please. So we began this spring. In May, we developed the work plan and launched a project webpage. In July and August, we produced the first two status updates. Those are written project reports that include all of the drafts of the work to date, as well as a feedback survey for folks to fill out to provide comment on the work. Also, this summer, service areas are conducting a review and assessment of existing advisory bodies at the city. I'll come back to that in a couple of slides. And at the end of this month, we'll publish our third written status update that will include drafts of all of the proposed citywide practices for advisory bodies. In October, as the chair mentioned, we hope to come back to you all and really dig into what all of those proposed citywide practices are, and get your feedback and input. And we'll also host two community input sessions. And we anticipate a final project report late October, and the work to come to council for its consideration by the end of the year. We do think that the adoption of citywide practices will require a little bit of code adoption by the full council, and that many of the citywide practices can exist in administrative rules. Next slide, please. So the proposed practices that we're creating are pretty broad. There is foundational work, so there is a citywide purpose statement for ABCs at the city, a new classification system, that's what are the types of bodies that we have at the city. There's a whole group on the life cycle of an ABC, so guidelines for how you create a new advisory body, guidelines for what goes in an advisory body's bylaws, and how they run their meetings, the relationship of advisory bodies to city leadership, including you all, providing for periodic review of existing advisory bodies, and how we dissolve bodies. Then there's work on composition, which covers everything from recruitment to application closure, application closure to administrative appointment, administrative appointment to council confirmation, and the diversity of applicants and members. And the final bucket is all things service. So what we expect of those who serve, restrictions on those who cannot serve, and the supports that we provide to our members that serve. Next slide, please. So, you know, this project started in the spring. Maybe it formed a little bit after charter review, but really, the need for citywide practices for advisory bodies has existed for a very long time at the city. And so we were fortunate to not have to begin this project from scratch this spring. And I want to share, you know, some of the inputs that have gone into the work to date. So first, the Government Transition Advisory Committee, earlier this year, recommended that the city review and reform its approach to advisory bodies. The recommendation was based in part on GTAC members' experiences, but also, they surveyed the staff and members of budget advisory committees at the city. And you hear a lot of common themes from members of advisory bodies, actually, and from staff as well. Some of the concerns are unclear objectives of advisory bodies, limited time to do their work, insufficient training and access to information, and unclear authority. Many survey respondents weren't even sure if city leadership paid attention to the recommendations of their advisory bodies. The city also has many available materials that inform this project, including the city's new charter, current and historic records and practices of the advisory bodies program, and existing ABC records and enabling legislation. The current council has shared a lot of perspectives from the dais this calendar year about advisory bodies. It tends to coincide with appointments that you have done, both as a full council and in committee. And when you have created new advisory bodies, it often creates a larger conversation about what the role of advisory bodies is. So I've gathered that information, and it's informed the drafts in our work. City staff have invaluable knowledge about advisory bodies, so we hold monthly meetings with the staff liaisons to advisory bodies to give them project updates, and they provide feedback on the proposed citywide practices. We've done some peer city research in Atlanta, Austin, Baltimore, Boston, Denver, Fresno, Minneapolis, Sacramento, and San Antonio. And we've also looked at local practices, Multnomah County, Washington County, and metro. Unfortunately, there aren't really standard best practices, either locally or across the country, for advisory bodies. I think the best and most comprehensive model that I have found is from the city of Minneapolis, and so we use that when relevant to developing our practices here. We also have an internal work group comprised of a council representative, Councilor Canal, Amanda as the engagement officer, a city attorney, a representative from the Office of Equity and Human Rights, and one representative from each of the four service areas. And then finally, invited community feedback. As I mentioned earlier, we release monthly written status updates, and those are distributed through emails to past applicants to advisory bodies, whether they were invited to join an advisory body or not. A couple hundred community-based organizations, publication in the Rose City Connection and City Insider, emails to all of you, your staff, and staff liaisons to advisory bodies. And we've included it in the city administrators' monthly reports at council. And every- And every time we do all of that distribution, we share a feedback form, so folks can provide feedback via an online survey or email. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, an important part of this project is the review and assessment of existing advisory bodies at the city. You know, I don't know if there's a right number of advisory bodies for the city to have, and that number may vary based on the perspectives and insights you need to do the work that's before you, but we do want to make sure that existing bodies are addressing needs and goals of the city, and that those serving are having meaningful experiences. And so this summer, the service areas are reviewing their existing bodies, and the purpose is to ensure an accurate inventory, assess the current supports such as staffing and resources, identify inactive, outdated, or redundant ABCs, to consider sunset clauses for ongoing bodies that may not have a long-term need, and to make any recommendations for change. So we will publish later this month, an updated inventory of ABCs at the city by classification, service area, and primary council body. For example, full council or a council committee like the governance committee. And then at the next report at the end of October, we will include the recommendations from the service areas for any changes to their existing advisory bodies. Next slide, and this is my last slide. I just want to share ways for folks to stay engaged with the project. We have a project webpage. It is portland.gov/advisoryenhancementproject. We have registration open for two community input sessions in October at portland.gov/civic/advisorygroups/events. There's a general project email, advisorybodies@portlandoregon.gov. And we will always do project updates in the citywide newsletter, which is Rose City Connection, and folks can sign up using the QR code or portland.gov-updates. And again, our next status update will be released later this month, and we hope to come back to the governance committee in October to dig into the citywide practices. Next slide, and thank you so much. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much for this presentation and for all your hard work. This is very, very exciting. I see councillor Clark has a question or comment.
Well, I just want to say that I think this is really difficult work to comb through the vast array of advisory committees, and it's really a part of the culture change that we're going through in the change in governance. And I know that people that I've talked to at meetings I have in the community go, well, what about that, that committee, and that committee, and what's happening? So I know there's a lot of interest, and I applaud your effort to provide some standardization across the board, particularly sunsets. I really appreciate that. And I'm just wondering, how are you going to measure success for yourself? How do you measure success on this? Is it the reduction in the number of advisory committees? Or how do you know that we've succeeded in this work?
Do you want to take it, or do you want me to take it? I appreciate the question, and thank you. I agree, it's complex, and I do think a lot of folks are interested and ready to have this conversation. I do believe it's been going on for quite some time. So to me, I would measure success in relationship to the goals that I articulated, right? The goals aren't all going to happen in the next month, but so, you know, I don't want to be redundant, but I mean, I think, one, we need an advisory body program that fits a mayor-council form of government, right? So we still have an advisory body program that was built for a commission form of government, and we haven't yet fully changed our practices. We've done council confirmation for existence of mayoral appointments, which is different, but we haven't done all of the transformation to adhere to a new form of government, which is not only mayor-council, but it's also districted-based representation, for example, right? So, you know, we don't have an application for advisory bodies that asks people what district they live in, right? So I think part of that is alignment with a new form of government. Two, I don't think we have a shared understanding of the purpose. Why do we have advisory bodies? I know that seems really basic, but we don't have a statement like that at the city, where you can all say, as city leadership, this is why we have them, right? This is what we believe the value of advisory bodies is, which creates shared expectation for the staff, for people who serve, and for those who are recipients of the advice about the meaning of it. So that's huge for me. Third is what you already referred to, standardization, is a goal for me, right? We have really inconsistent practices across our advisory bodies, almost as many as we have advisory bodies, so standardization. You know, the number, I don't have a goal around the number, because when I look at other jurisdictions, there's no magic number. There's no way to calculate what the perfect number of advisory bodies is for a municipality. So to me, it's less about choosing a number, but it's about, are the ones that we have advancing a goal and outcome of the city, need of the city, and are the people serving having meaningful experiences? That we do have to, I think, be able to say yes to. And then just being better communicators about the advisory body program to Portlanders. Those are mine.
Julie, I would just say, thank you for that. The way you just articulated that needs to be written in here. You've got your goals, but you just, you know, were very clear in elucidating what the outcome should be, and I think you can, that was excellent. And I don't see that here when I read this, it's just boom, boom, boom. It'd be easier to really get your head around it for an average person like me and other citizens, but thank you for that. I think it's very clear, and again, I'm going to say I really appreciate the sunset clause concept.
Thank you, councillor.
Councillor Pertle-Ginni.
Thank you, Chair. I'll reiterate to start what my colleague councillor Clark said, which is gratitude for the work that you're doing. Having sat on advisory bodies, appointed people to advisory bodies, and received reports from them all, I know that some of our advisory bodies are very used by council, right? We pay a lot of attention to what we get forward, and some advisory bodies, it seems, we rarely or never hear from again. So having a better understanding of the different roles, and an understanding that sometimes the roles may be different, is really important. You said, you said in one of the slides that one of the foundational pieces of the work was coming up with a citywide purpose statement, and you mentioned to my colleague that we don't have a clear purpose statement yet. But I'm wondering, as you've started to develop that, and as you've looked at the advisory bodies, is your sense so far that most of those bodies do align with a purpose statement that makes sense for where you are headed? Or is your sense that we will hear back from you in the final report, that there are a whole lot of advisory bodies where we need to rethink their purpose, and there may be a lot of work to do to bring the work of the bodies in line with a more common purpose statement? I'm just trying to get a sense of what we should expect in terms of bodies of work that we'll need to take on after your report.
Thank you for the question, councillor. It's a good one. I have been thinking about this project on two tracks that are definitely interrelated, but not the same. And the first is the development of the standardized citywide practices that councillor Clark was talking about. The second related track is the assessment of existing bodies, right? They inform each other, but they're not entirely dependent on one another. So I have, we've drafted a proposed purpose statement for advisory bodies at the city. It's in the supplemental document on the governance committee agenda page, that is mainly from things I've heard from you all from the dais this calendar year, old council resolutions about advisory bodies, and reading and understanding the individual purposes of individual bodies at the city. So there's that, right? It's sort of high-level. Now, we also have probably a little bit less than 100 advisory bodies at the city that have their own creation or enabling legislation, often with their own purpose statements. So it's hard to write sort of a common purpose statement that fully captures the purposes of almost 100 bodies. So they're not meant to be a proxy for one another. The citywide purpose statement is meant to find the themes in why we have bodies that we have. So just, that's kind of structurally where we're at. In terms of your question about individual bodies, I'm not sure I know, right? So the assessment of bodies is primarily happening within service areas, because the vast majority of the city's advisory bodies are in service areas. And so one of the questions that is out to bodies is exactly that. Does this individual body continue to meet an identified need or goal of the city? You know, and I do think it is likely that we will make changes to certain bodies as an outcome of this project. And I'd like to get to the point, back to standardization, where every advisory body has creation or enabling legislation that has the same minimum elements in it, one of which is exactly that, saying what is the goal or need of the city that this body is helping to advance. That was a very long way around. I think that that's where we are now.
I appreciate that. It sounds like more to come on this, not a clear answer, but it is a part of the body of the work that you're taking on.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Vice Chair Ryan.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Julia, Amanda. Good to see you, and I want to lift you, Ocean, because you're the person that's been keeping this all together for multiple years that I know of, and I hope you feel seen. I also hope you feel supported, because I recall some meetings with you where you were hoping for this conversation to be formalized, so it's good to see you. You know, code cleanup was kind of rushed in the last, at the end of the last council by staff on us, and I recall this one was one of the greatest examples of all of us saying, wait, we have an opinion here, you can't just make us quickly vote on it. And it was because of the lack of standards, the lack, you know, you'd get a new assignment, thank you, mayor, oh, this has how many advisory committees? And, oh, this one hasn't met for a while, this one's really active, this one's in code, but it's really not, you know, it was just all over the map. So I know that you're digging through many, many stories like that, and you know much more than I ever could, but I really appreciate that you're diving into it, and I'm glad that you stayed on to take on this assignment. I think you're, the question about success, and I like the way you answered it, it was, I would just offer that, I think it's like a lot of our code cleanup that we're doing in permitting, I think it's like, here's how it's like that. There's clutter, and, and that's true, and there's places where you don't need a code, but maybe you need an ad hoc committee and a task force for three to six months, which a lot of people say yes to that, because they'd like it to end in a short period of time. So I hope that that's part of this journey. And I also noticed this when supervising, if I can use that word, a bureau director when you were commissioner, how all over the map it was on people's life experiences, professional experiences, executive experiences, on how to steward and actually know how to work with an advisory board. And that was really so noticeable to me within the first six months of how inconsistent that was. So I don't know what the internal training is like for our staff executives that have the opportunity to enhance the work by having these hard-working volunteers say yes to work with them, but it was just fascinating on how some knew how to use it, and it reminded me, Julie, of doing consulting with executive directors in the nonprofit space, and how so many struggle with that part of their job, managing up, if you will, to these bodies, and how to not make them a check-the-box or figureheads, but actually how they become strategic thinkers and enhance the work, just loosen it up a little bit to have them show up for these meetings and really be seen and utilized in that, in that scope. So was there, was there talk about how to do the training? All right, there you go. I didn't know that, but you're shaking your head good. You're nodding, I mean.
I am shaking my head, yes. You're right, and one of the inconsistencies we have in our current practices, practices is inconsistency of staffing, right? So the level of staff support is not the same for every advisory body, nor have we said what the expectation is of a staff of an advisory body. And as we're doing this work, we are working on, what are the onboarding needs of our members? You know, what training do all advisory body members who come into the city need? Likewise, what's the parallel training that any staff of an advisory body needs? And creating some base level of understanding about the support we expect out of the staff of an advisory body. So yes, there's sort of a list of trainings for staff that we're developing.
If I could try to frame it in one simple example, when you're, when you're trained to know how to supervise and build teams, you have a lot of privilege in your, in how you show up, your agency, to be that supervisor. When you bring in advisory boards, how do you respect the fact that you're managing up and not go into one of two camps, ignore them, and, and figure out how to move forward without them knowing that you ignored them? Or overreacting as they're thinking out loud in a meeting after a long day, and there's probably some nuggets in there, but maybe you don't need to get emotional and overreact to what just happened in that meeting? And so I just found it to be consistently confusing in how they were showing up in those roles, and I didn't feel like the city supported them in that, that quest. And I even found in evaluations that was something that wasn't given enough attention in your review of our employees. So I just hope that when we do this, it really has a lot of internal system improvement work as well. Otherwise, I think this will fall flat, and I know you don't want that. So thanks for agreeing to this. I look forward to hearing how that goes.
Yeah, thank you, councillor.
And I would just add that as part of this work, once we, you know, get through this phase of the foundational pieces and figuring out some of the assessment findings and all of those things, the shared practices really is, it's not just in the way that we're managing the bodies, but really like, and the maintenance and development, but really how our, how our staff, learning about what are those shared practices, and have the support that they need so that the community can have a meaningful experience. And so I think when we say shared practices, it's really the whole universe of the advisory bodies.
Yeah.
The idea would be that we would be able to create something that's more sustainable in that way, so that once we put in these new structures, then we can maintain them.
I think it's also in that category of we're used to, when we go out in the public and there's some heated meetings, we expect that. But sometimes there's really a lot of great tension at some of your advisory meetings, and that doesn't mean it was, in fact, that's probably a good meeting. And so how can you see that as a positive meeting and glean what you can from that? And I think that sometimes we're trained to assume that was a bad meeting because there was dissent or some pushback, and it's like, that's exactly what, why we have these. So how can we lean into that? Yeah, thanks.
Thank you so much for being here today, for all of this work. I'm very excited to see this work continue to move forward. A next step is that in October, we will be able to use one of these meetings as a listening session for the Advisory Bodies Enhancement Project. So looking forward to working together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Diego, can you please read the next item?
Item four, council procedures handbook discussion.
Colleagues, today we have the opportunity to provide input on a draft table of contents for a Portland City Council Governance Handbook. So many have expressed how helpful it would be if we collect and combine many of the different city practices and policies into a central document. My office has been collaborating with council operations to draft a Portland City Council Governance Handbook. This handbook would serve not only as a reference for current and future councillors, but also increase transparency of council processes for our community. It's something that almost every other city has. I'd also like to emphasize that the intent is for this Governance Handbook to serve as a guide, not binding policy. not binding policy. Before I turn this over to our presenters today, I want to take a moment to appreciate and acknowledge the amazing work of Aubrey Chen on my team, as well as Craig Cook on council, in Council Operations. This approach to working on governance issues collaboratively between Council Operations and council offices is new and is deeply connected in my personal values of cooperation between and among all of us working in City Hall for the community. So deeply thank you for your amazing work. And now I will turn things over to Craig Cook and Aubrey Chen. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, councilors. My name's Craig Cook. I'm a policy analyst in Council Operations. I use he/him pronouns.
Awesome. And my name is Aubrey Chen. I use your pronouns. And I'm a council aide with Counselor Kaya Malin's office.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak a little bit today about the Council Governance Handbook process. We would see this as a tool, helpful tool for councilors, staff, and the public, also potentially helpful to orient new councilors. It's an informational reference guide for folks, a user-friendly format for bringing together guidance from the Charter, Code, and other nonbiting best practices and recommendations, all together in one source for folks to use. The topics are based on council and staff input. And draft topics were sent around on Friday afternoon to all councilors, including everyone on this committee, but everyone on council as well. And we've also informed these draft topics based on input from council and staff conversations, as well as similar documents from peer cities and from the Oregon League of Cities and other organizations. This is not a policy document. It doesn't introduce any new policies. It doesn't impose policies on council that have not been decided by council. It will evolve and change as a living document. As council adopts new policies and procedures, the handbook will be updated and will live in Council Operations to continually inform the work of council. So as far as the timeline, we began initial research this summer. We are currently soliciting council input on topics that we'll cover. We'll take this feedback in the next couple of months to draft the handbook. We'll continue to request feedback throughout the fall from councilors with the goal of initial publication of the document in December. As I said, continual updates will be ongoing as policies and procedures change. So one of the main, one of the focuses of this handbook is to connect you all with resources, to make your jobs easier. So everything from how to request briefings and presentations from city staff, how to solicit recommendations for the policy process, information on the budget process, and more. It's meant to be a comprehensive resource document. To that end, it will also include overview of council adjacent and support offices, like Council Operations, the Clerk, which sits within the Auditor's Office, as you know, and the City Attorney's Office, their roles and responsibilities, and how, and recommendations on how councilors and staff can best work with these offices to get policy, administrative, procedural, communications, legal, and other support. So as an example of that, here is the scope of services provided by Council Operations. You likely are most familiar with committee staffing. So those of us who sit up here on the dais to support, but also are working with you as committee leadership to set and file agenda items, organize presentations for committee, and also prepare committee staff summaries on legislative items that come out of committee and go before council. Council Operations also provides administrative support. You're also likely familiar with your district admin constituting services and scheduling support provided by district. A couple other things provided by Council Operations that will be highlighted in this handbook include policy assistance. So Council Operations policy analysts like myself provide on-request assistance with policy research, analysis, development, drafting, proofing, anything you can think of in the policy process. And all communications, as an important note, all communications on policy topics with Council Operations analysts are held in confidence in between your council office and Council Operations. They're not shared with other council offices, committee or council leadership, or the mayor and city administrator unless otherwise requested by the counselor initiating the policy conversation. And then finally, the coordination work that council ops does. So communication, social media, website and listserv management, scheduling of special meetings, and tracking items as they're moving through council. This handbook will, as I said before, not be a document to introduce new policies, but we may identify through this process where there are gaps and places where we may, you all may want to create policies. And so as you identify those, we're happy to draft them for council approval. And then they will eventually be included in the handbook. So as an example of that, several councilors have requested guidance or clarification on the process for field trips or off-site meetings to conduct inspections, things like that. There's no currently existing council policy on that topic. So for right now, the handbook will include best practices from other jurisdictions. It'll include recommendations from the city attorney, but it will not introduce a policy unless councilors decide that you want one, and then we're happy to draft one. How to provide input? So as I mentioned, the draft topic list was sent to you all on Friday. You may submit written input on the topic areas either directly to Aubrey and I or to the Council Operations generic inbox at counciloperations@portlandoregon.gov by Monday, September 22. All of that written input that's provided to Council Operations, as I said previously, will be treated with discretion. It won't be attributed to any particular counselor or council office without your permission. And we do ask that at this time you focus your feedback on the broad topic areas, whether there are topics you believe should be added or removed. And as I said, we'll come back later on for further input on the handbook itself. Thanks very much. Happy to take any questions and also very happy to hear your ideas.
Thank you so much for this presentation. That's helpful that today, the, what is most helpful is to focus on the broad topics covered under the table of contents, not under exactly what that content will be. That'll be great to get feedback for us on topics, ones that we may be missed. And this is not a set in stone list. It says draft very largely on it. I'm not married to anything on here. If there are any councilors who joined us to the, for the government's Governance Committee, I don't see any, feel free to approach the dais if you want to join the conversation. And to councilors that are not able to join us this afternoon but want to provide feedback echoing what Craig just said, just reach out to Craig and Aubrey directly. Send your feedback to the Council Operations email address. Now I'd like to open up this agenda item for discussion. Counselor Clerk, do you want to kick us off?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple comments, maybe questions. Let me just riff a little bit. I wish we'd had something like this at onboarding, where we just, everything was on send and we didn't talk very much about procedures or process. So this is going to be really helpful for new councilors in the future and maybe for us as well. And it sounds like you have a, you're developing a parallel piece where this will also be a piece for the public. Is that, I heard you say that.
Correct.
And you're putting yourself in their shoes, how they understand, which makes me think it needs to be very simple. And I think I heard you say it's not prescriptive. It's just, it's very, very simple. Sort of like helpful hints for the council. I did have a couple comments. I think looking at the table of contents, I would just draw a cautionary line above executive and administrative collaboration. That's kind of a sensitive territory. And I'm wondering if you're also having the administration or city manager review this as well?
For the record, Aubrey Chen, she her pronouns, council aide. The answer is yes. We've reached out to the city administrator's office. And we've also reached out to other city administrator professional organizations and associations, as well as city administrators who do this work in other cities to get their feedback. Something that's really helpful here is just helping delineate and create best practices and norms, knowing that the executive and the legislative arms will need to collaborate in terms to, you know, sharing information, of sharing how, you know, things are running in respective districts or how certain departments are operating. I think we want to open up the dialogue for some of the hopes of how collaboration could be without being overly prescriptive, knowing that, you know, a lot of this will have to be built in collaboration with a new city administrator.
And does that include the DCAs? Are they reviewing this?
It would be up to their discretion.
So when it comes past executive and administrative collaboration, all the expectations and best practices under that, I think we need to be really sensitive about decorum, respect. How we couch all of that is going to be really sensitive, I guess, and careful. Let's see if I had any other comments. But I would just emphasize, keep it simple and not prescriptive. And in terms of your, the chart that showed the four different bubbles, you had administrative support by district. I don't know if this is on topic or not, but I think at some point we need to evaluate that role by district. I think everybody's working with administrative support differently. And that it'll be helpful to have that discussion, maybe in this handbook or elsewhere. But those are my really high level. I don't have any real deep specifics. I'm glad you're looking at best practices in other cities. But just keep it simple and be sensitive after executive and administrative collaboration.
Thank you, Counselor Clerk. To your point about the district admin support, I don't think that necessarily reevaluating that would be a process of this handbook, but it could be one of those things that as that procedure or policy is changed by council or council leadership, then it would later be incorporated into the handbook.
Counselor Pertle-Ginni.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for bringing this forward on the agenda today. This is related to a lot of conversations that you and I had early on about the work of governance. And it's really great to see this moving. I appreciate Craig and Aubrey, both of your work here. And I think having Council Operations ultimately own the final product is very appropriate and the right place for us to hold this so that it outlasts any of our time in these seats. I agree with Counselor Clerk that there are some things at the end here where we need to be really careful. It sounds like this final document will be a combination of best practices and norms and procedures and policies, some of which council has weighed in on, some of which perhaps are the way we have started to do things that we haven't had a formal conversation about, but that have become accepted practice, and some of which perhaps council hasn't weighed in on at all, but they're suggestions. And I want to make sure that as we look, especially at some of the, the more politically sensitive topics listed here, that there's clarity around how each of the subsections comes to be. I don't think we need to label specifically, this is a past policy, this is a norm, this is just a suggestion. But I think that as we have further conversations, maybe we can air some of those things so that it's clear to councilors and to our staff where each of those pieces comes from. I just think that will help us as we move forward. I also just want to say on the record as we're starting to discuss this that I hope we can move eventually from just a handbook towards something that is really more of our procedure manual and that we start to think about a procedure manual as something that every time we, I don't know how we want to describe what we do every two years, but maybe have a new group of people up here, maybe not, but restart the work to some extent. We review this and that this is something that is hopefully not a living document and that we're making changes all the time throughout the year because we need to have some consistency on how we operate our work as we move forward past this initial year. But that we do assume that every either year or two years, it's something we come back to, make any changes to that we need to see and then maybe even formally accept so that we're all recommitting every couple of years to the fact that these are our norms and our operating procedures. So thank you for getting us started. And I'm looking forward to providing my feedback, which I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to do over the weekend, but I will this week, and to continuing through this committee to work on some of the details that are in here with you all.
Thank you, President.
Vice Chair Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you, Aubrey, so much for, you gave me some early updates on this. And Craig, for the presentation today. This is definitely a resource document that I think all of us are like, wow, where was this when we needed it? So I'm so glad we're building this. And I think the word procedure manual is an adequate word that I think I was inserting here anyway. So I'm glad that came up. Thank you, Council President. Looking at this, some of it was already handled by, especially you, Counselor Clark. Thank you. The word, under the differences between legislative and executive authority in that category, I always find land use hearings to be kind of a separate thing. But was that implied under ordinances?
Land use decisions are covered under quasi judicial, which is located, I believe, on the second page of the table of contents.
Where's quasi judicial? It's on there? Oh, it's on the next page. Okay. I think because my brain was going into the, what are the different things we vote on and which has a first and second reading? That's probably why I was looking for it there. So great. Is executive committee on here? The reason I say that, because I think a couple of things when I was new that caught me off guard was executive committee meetings and what that is all about. And so maybe that's a helpful edit to consider putting that in there. And the other is, are IGAs in here? Intergovernmental agreements definition?
I do not.
You have so many. And they really are a thing. And so I think that could be in the handbook as well.
We can definitely add both of those two sections or into the draft.
And then in terms of, I like that you explained executive and administrative collaboration. I think that's something that's really important for us to really dive into right now as we build this new form of government. And maybe for the record, so mayor is executive and administrative collaboration would be the city administrator and everybody else?
Yes, that is the intention of that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was following those definitions. And I really appreciate you bringing up. I think the best, the part that I had the most questions on were expectations and best practices. And I will just second that keeping those high level and clear, don't get too far in the weeds. But that's probably the part that I'll be diving in the most just to make sure that they're not, like, that's tough because how do you explain those without? Anyway, good luck not being editorial when you're writing that part. That would be a hard assignment. Definitely can't use AI for that.
Okay, great. I echo that, that having, explaining IGAs. And then, Vice Chair Ryan, were you talking about executive sessions? Explaining those? I think even just having a section, it might be in here, but really explaining the different types of meetings would be great, especially for someone new to this. And even as I heard IGA, intergovernmental agreement, I wondered about almost a, would it be an index? Or with acronyms, to explain acronyms? If that could make sense? I could see that being helpful. And if we're open to just kind of little more informally, not raising hands and just chatting, I also would love to just hear, one thing I was going to ask, Council President, is to explain maybe the difference of a procedure manual versus handbook?[1740.05] Is that something that this could turn into? Is that something that would be separate? Yeah. I know many of you have more experience kind of with some of the different terms.
I'm going to take, having my mic on for a minute, to say one other thing first, which is that as you were all talking about executive sessions right there, one of the things that I think we could include here is, this is what a council meeting is, this is what a work session is, this is what an executive session is, this is what committee meetings are, and a little bit about what to expect in each. But I think that we should include that work session piece as well, and the different types of agenda items and actions that we have in each.
Can I just say something about that?
Please.
It was a shock to me, not having been a city council follower, that every council meeting is preceded by the opportunity for five people to speak. I didn't know that that happened.
Yeah.
You know, that there are interesting little, you know, procedures like that that I wasn't aware of. And that's not to say that in the future, we can't change that or even include it for our committee meetings as well.
But those are the things that I figured out by just living them. And I also remember the first couple of months, a lot of things on the whiteboard, like, okay, so what are the different types of actions that can happen? And then, all right, let me, let me understand, it's charter, and then ordinance slash code, and then kind of understanding the different oomph behind each one. I think that would be great to have some of that explained if possible.
And maybe even a piece on Robert's rules. Somewhere. I don't know, I didn't see it, but. Where does that come into play? Sorry, we're, and you're stepping on your toes there, but.
No, I took the mic bean on to step on everybody else's toes.
Yeah, I was thinking we could openly talk a little bit.
But to Vice President and Chair, to your question about a procedure manual versus a handbook, I think what I'm hearing right now is that this document is a bit of a what-to-expect and that more public-facing and explanatory-for-new-counselors type of information. I think we also need, and ideally it would all be in one place, and this would flow into what I'm about to describe. And we wouldn't lose those first pieces, but we would add to it. Ideally, what I think of when I think of a set of procedures or that type of handbook is, here are the agreed-upon things for how we operate. Here are, either because they have become our norms or because we have adopted them through resolutions, this is the way that we do things. And I think ultimately with a procedure manual, it's something that you probably do adopt as a body every year or every two years, just to recommit to that being how you do things. I don't think you need to adopt everything in there individually, but that we would have that overview of how we do things that's less about the public understanding and more about us agreeing to our systems, again, at the beginning of each year or every other year. So I think we start with, how do we do things? What's the public facing? And then eventually, we can maybe get to that we have enough agreed-upon norms that we have a set of how we do things that we adopt every January or every other January.
So as an example, your decision procedurally to limit vote explanations, for example, or limit the number of times somebody can speak, or that kind of thing, those are more the second document that you're talking about, the norms, the procedures.
And those decisions were based on Robert's rules, which of course guides us if we don't have other rules that guide us instead. But those are the types of things that we would adopt in that handbook eventually. And I think this is the right place to start. This is really important, and I hope that eventually we add enough of those other things that it becomes that procedural handbook. And I apologize, I'm getting a call from my kid, I'm going to step out for just a few minutes, but I'll be back. Go for it.
Did you want to say something, Councilor Ryan?
I just forgot.
I want to also bring up, because I think, Councilor Clark, I heard you say you hope that some of this includes decorum. That, I just want to bring up that there are different feelings about that on council. And I've already heard from some other councillors, and I respect that. And I hear that when some of these, like communication expectations with full council under executive and administrative collaboration, and then also some of the ones, like working relationships between council and city staff, communication between councillor, city manager, and staff, that is dipping into the decorum area. And there are some difference, difference of opinions on council of if and how we should have something official. And so just want to say that this, I just want to name that, and name that we could be as high-level as possible and just, you know, it could even say that councillors are to create their own norms of how they work together. It could be as simple as pointing to citywide HR policies. But just want to name that that is an area that we've touched on before, and I do think is important, and we've been pushed to talk about it. But I also see how it's tricky, because I've had folks say, if you have policies around decorum, you also have to think about how to enforce them, and if they're going to be enforced. And so just want to say, I know this is a sticky area, and I don't have set ideas of exactly where this is going to go. And I'm very open to hearing where we're at as a, as a full council with that.
I really appreciate that. I agree with you. I think we should start out very high-level. I mean, respect. And then go from there, just really basically respect your fellow councillor, tease that out some, but I don't think we can be prescriptive. It's more of a value statement about how we work together. And actually, Madam Chair, you're really the best at that, given your background and your temperament. I think you're one of the best people to articulate that.
We are just, we just touched on if and how decorum should be part of this. And just.
High level.
High level. That's kind of what we're thinking, that it's high-level and acknowledging that folks are at different places on council. But that is, this is something that has been brought up.
As we think about the handbook versus procedure manual, that feels like one of those things that helps to tip us into procedure manual. Those things that we all need to say together. We agree that this is not just the, the public explanation of what we do and what to expect, but the things that guide us in our work. And while I agree that high-level is probably necessary, at least at this point, I think that bodies like ours have to frankly mature before we can get to the point of holding ourselves to very specific procedures around decorum. I do think that we absolutely need to have some basic principles that we can all agree to around how we show up in these spaces.
Well, I think with your, under your leadership, we've slowly implemented a few things to take us in that direction as we develop practice among the 12 of us. And I think you've done a great job in inching us forward in that direction. And in those changes that you've implemented seem to have taken. I mean, I think, I think they're working. I'm not sure what the next one is, but I hope we can continue on that track to develop that, that culture or commonality amongst us, whether it's timing, or respect, or whatever it is. But I think it's, I think it's been working. Can I say one other thing?
Yeah.
Just, I don't, I was going to say this just for closing, but I really want to thank you, Madam Chair, for taking this on. This work is all so foundational and so important. I remind it every time I come to this committee how important it is to establish these policies and procedures here, to air them, whether it's the advisory bodies, or the way we communicate, or county committees, or whatever. This is such important work. I just really appreciate your leadership. I think we're, we're doing a good job eight months in. We're, you know, we're kind of inching forward carefully, but I think, I think it's working.
I think so, too. Thank you for saying that, and thank you. I have a great vice chair, and I think that this committee is, I love coming to this committee. And I, sometimes I notice when we're with the full council and some other councillors seem bored by governance topics, I'm like, well, our committee, everyone in our committee loves it, so. Did you want to hop in there, Vice Chair?
Oh, yeah. That was a wonderful conversation. Yeah, that's why most nonprofits always have two committees, and then the rest are ad hoc, governance and finance. And then the rest are ad hoc based on what the mission is delivering in that any given operational year. Perhaps I'm giving a little bit of an advertisement for the policy I mentioned earlier. I have a question about timeline. The last presentation, they were pretty clear about where they thought that was, how this was moving along. What do you see the procedure here with our timeline?
Sure. So I think we were looking at drafting in October, November with the idea of having a document by the end of the year.
I like that, Craig. So the point is, we want to make sure by the time, there could be, who knows, whatever, by the time we swear in a council, say after the 2026 election, in the beginning of your 2027, that this is ready to use.
Absolutely. I think ideally, we have something before then, but certainly having a final document by the beginning of 2027.
And that just backed our earlier comments, like, of course, we could, we're building everything as we were serving, so it wasn't ready when we got here. But this is something that we're, is really, is going to be really important and will really help with onboarding. So thank you for taking this on. These are the kind of jobs that not everyone is skilled and gifted at seeing through. And I do think that the two of you seem perfect for this assignment, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And also just confirming and reiterating that it would continue to be a living document that's available online but can be altered, and council operations will own it, and information can be added, removed as needed.
Absolutely. I think that's the intention. I think to the Council President's point, if this were, if there were to be a section that was specifically about approved procedures that council has voted on, that would just need to be, we would come up with a cadence by which that was approved.
Colleagues, any more thoughts about these topic headers? Anything that you think should be included or possibly removed? And also, you'll be able to, we'll be able to provide feedback looking at the timeline in October and November? So continuing to draft and provide input, any other thoughts about those? Great. Well, we were approved to go a little bit over, but we might be able to wrap up on time. No? Yeah. Our next meeting is Monday, September 22nd. I can check with the clerk. Did we have any testimonies signed up?
We did not, as we just had four presentation agenda items.
Okay, great. So we have a couple of topics that will be coming back up. At our last council meeting, there was discussion around how to use the consent agenda more efficiently. So I am hoping that we can bring up that topic at some point at a governance committee meeting soon. And then, following up on what we just heard about advisory bodies, there's talk about using the first meeting in October of governance as a listening session. They were saying that that is a next step. And then just additionally, a reminder to provide feedback about these topics that we just heard about in the handbook. Let them know by Monday, September 22nd about the headers, and they are open to hearing from us. And, yes.
If we are going to solicit input in October, are you thinking that we would reach out to former GTAC members or neighborhood district coalitions? Or how, how are we going to reach out to the public for, to comment on this?
Would you guys like to come back up? Is that okay?
I think we'd be open to the procedure by which this committee or council feels is most appropriate. We want this to be a document that is representative of you all's wishes and values. And so former GTAC members, neighborhood district coalitions, those could all be on the table for providing feedback.
Right. I would, I would recommend that we reach out to the district coalitions and other groups that pay attention to what we're doing, and see if this is going to be helpful for them. If they, if we can distribute some sort of a draft, I don't know, through the district coalitions or some other mechanism.
And this email, counciloperations@portlandoregon.gov. I know that, is that for mostly councillors to provide input on the topics? Or is that for members of the public also?
We were envisioning at this time, it would be councillors for the topics. It's a public email address, certainly happy to take public input at any time. I think we want to, like I said, be intentional about how we're engaging with the public on this and get a little bit more direction from you all on exactly how you'd like us to do that.
Great. Well, it sounds like by September 22nd, councillors give feedback on the topics, and then we can continue to have conversations about meaningful ways to include the public in that drafting and continued input process in October and November. Did you want to say something?
Yeah. I have two other comments or questions. Under City Hall Bodies, Rules and Operations, what, what do you mean by structure of City Hall? I've started to think about architectural renderings or something. What does that mean?
Just as I come back to the dais, what I was thinking about is really sort of outlining the role of the clerk, how council operations sort of works in conjunction with city council, and really sort of outlining the different bodies and the different sort of parts of how city council works. Just as a personal anecdote, for example, I was, despite being a staffer for two years, very surprised by the existence of council operations and the fact that there's a body that was built to support and, you know, provide summaries of committees, for example, which was something that I'd never, may, it may be personal, may be tape, but it's something that I was unaware of and would have been very helpful for me. So when I say, when, sorry, I'm stammering a little bit. For the different council bodies and different parts, what we really wanted to outline are the different groups that really support and operate within City Hall.
I think to the point of it being a resource for folks, kind of what those different bodies do, writing some role clarity, and also how councillors and councillor staff can engage with those bodies.
So when I, this is good, so when I listen to that, it sounds like the structure of City Hall is a bigger picture category. And then there's councillor clerk, council operations, city auditor.
Right, those are.
I think I'm confused on why it's parallel with all of those, but is it just part of the header, the City Hall Bodies, Rules and Operations?
Yes, it is the broader category.
Maybe it just needs to be moved up with that. Otherwise, I was like, what, what is, how does that, how do we speak to that specifically in a parallel construct? Okay. That's all around this meeting, right?
I see what you're saying. Below, structure, City Hall, all of those could be maybe indented or under that umbrella.
Yeah.
Good catch.
Yeah, now that I listened to it, it sounded like it was a broader topic. And then when you're getting into the, and the expectations and best practices, I noticed that there's a lack of consistency at times with the word, the usage of the word expectations. So if you say expectations at the beginning of your header, would, what? It's probably not necessary to say expectations of policy creation. It's like expectation, best practices of city council meetings, committees, policy creation, mayor's budget. Otherwise, I'm wondering, why did you write, why did we put expectations in front of mayor's budget, in front of policy creation and staff reports, but not in front of the other ones? So it's just consistency. That makes sense?
Thank you. Well, we got through a lot today, colleagues. Thank you so much. And with that, I will, I will now adjourn this meeting of the Governance Committee.